Good evening, everybody. As there was some question last week regarding the chairpersonship and how, I know in the past I've described it as figuratively handing over the gavel. I've mentioned this on a number of occasions in the past without objection. Under Robert's Rules of Order, it's called creating a pro tem chair. And as chair, so long as there's no objection, I have the authority to do that. So I just wanted there to be some clarity about that. I've talked about this on a number of occasions. And when we eliminated our committees, we have basically eliminated our chairpersons. And so the only way to facilitate those meetings and keep my colleagues engaged in leadership positions during the course of these meetings is to appoint a chair. Again, I've used the phrase handing the gavel over to the person. But again, in Robert's Rules of Order, it's referred to creating a pro tem chair. And so unless there is some objection to that by the full body, that's what I will continue to do. Again, the goal being to facilitate the engagement of every board member, even though we no longer have committees, I think everybody agreed it was important to facilitate that kind of leadership. And also because we're very blessed and fortunate to have board members, seven of them all together, who many are subject matter experts. And that is a good segue to, again, turn the gavel over to Commissioner Powell to chair this finance budget deliberation.
Thank you, President White. In our last meeting, President White said, "We've always done it this way." And I took him aside afterwards and say, "Well, we haven't always done it this way, but we've, but it has evolved into a pattern." My way of running the finance budget deliberations has evolved over the time that I had been chair. It didn't always run this way, but I found over time that allowing one commissioner, Commissioner one question at a time and moving through across the table repeatedly was a good way to keep everyone engaged and for everyone to get their questions out. As you learned from the last go-around, if there are related questions or follow-on questions from other board members, I do acknowledge that so that we can try to keep the subject matter, stay focused on the subject matter. And if anyone believes that there is a better way, then we can certainly consider that for the next time. But until we've experienced it this way, until we've all experienced it this way, we don't really know if it's better, right? So at this time, the first thing I'd like to do is ask my colleagues if there are any questions, what we refer to as the alibi questions, from the first round, from Sections 1, 2, and 3. Are there any questions that came up after the last meeting that you realize, any of my colleagues realized went unanswered? Yes, Judith. Commissioner Davis.
(inaudible)
I'm sorry, is your mic on, Judith? I can't quite hear you. If it's red, it's not on. Turn, there you go. Hello?
Yep.
I want a confirmation again about the reorganization of special education. Where did we leave off? Did we leave off with only 16 staff? Or are we going to do the 28 that was needed for, to do the full model?
Celia's going to answer those questions. But the 8 additional, not 24, 24 that are in the budget beyond the draft budget that I gave you. So it will, I assume after the third meeting, you will, the 5.9 million that was revenue over and above the draft budget, that has eight more positions for special ed.
Okay. Now, the caseload, though, said it takes 28 persons, and that would only take 20, the 24, 16 and 28.
I believe that was revised, but where's Celia? Go ahead.
Per Keisha, we are fully staffed to accommodate the plan. There are two additional staff people that were transferred from preschool to special education, which gave her the exact number that she needed.
Okay.
Okay?
So it's a total of 24 at this point?
I'm not going to say what the total is. I have to count that up. But whatever, she's done it. I'll count it up, okay?
Okay.
All right, thanks.
And then the staffing that we need, I'm not sure, the consent decree, does any of that impact the staffing that we'll need? Has that been compensated for?
Yes, that's all been allotted for in the 1920 budget. But again, the consent decree isn't done, but the staffing question is resolved.
Yes. Okay. Yeah, I think that was all for special education then.
And before we move on to Section 4, I would ask the administration, is there anything that you want to shed light on, new light on, from Sections 1 through 3 since the last meeting?
Really, just to say that we're, tonight I have the chiefs up here, and Beth is filling in for Amy, and of course, our CFO. So we're prepared for Sections 4, 5, 6, and I guess 7 tonight. But whichever your questions are, we have the answers. And you got the new enrollment, or not really new enrollment, but it's more exact.
I did have a few more questions, but I'm not sure they're from round, the first one or not. I was going to ask about vacancies. Was that, was that in 1, 3?
If you want to lead with that question, we can. I just want to remind everyone that we got information on Section 5 late, so I will entertain alibis on Section 5 at our final deliberations. And we're taking up 7 on the next time, too. So it's 4, Sections 4 and 6, first and foremost. And if the time permitting, we'll go into 5 or 7, okay? So Commissioner Hallmark, and then we will start the round.
Yes, I'm looking at Section 3, Page 19, 1.51. The question was about Title I monies and how they're dedicated to parents, and there was a good response here about how these monies are used. I would just like if somebody could kind of review this for the record, kind of on the record, like, kind of go over some of the main ideas here in this section once again, just to shed a little bit more light. Because there are always so many questions about Title I, and how parents can access it, and what the procedures are, and all of that kind of thing, so.
Is this the page you needed, Commissioner Hallmark?
It's Page 9. 1.51, it's orange.
That's it, right there. Uh-huh.
Yeah. It says Page 9 in the corner, bottom right-hand corner, and it's 1.51.
So I can shed a little light on that? Yep. Thank you.
Still 1.51? Okay. There we go.
Okay, great. You want me just review it a little bit?
Yeah, just review it and kind of, yeah, unpack that.
So with Title I, there is an allocation that we're required to put in every school, which is based on their enrollment and their need. Once that's been determined by the Title I Program Office, then they show that that is the projected allocation to the school, and the school submits a plan with their school-based planning team, with families engaged, of course, on how they're going to use that money to engage families. Now, as many of you know, it's highly restricted dollars. You have to be very specific about how you use the funds, but it can include light refreshments for families, activities, childcare, bus passes for parents to attend activities, so on and so forth. In addition, there are FTEs in the Office of Parent Engagement to provide support for the activities that they do over the course of the year. Approximately 4,000 was allocated to the board to support some of their efforts in addition to that, that they have done over the course of this past year, and that'll continue based on need over the course of the 1920 school year. So that's how the Title I funds are. If, for example, they do come into the Title I office and in collab, well, they come into the parent engagement office, and then the Title I Program Office in collaboration reviews them, assures they're signed off by the parent before the monies are then released. I will say a second piece to that is that PAC, we've worked with PAC, the bilingual council, and CPAC, and we're having something coming up towards the, at the end of next month, to make sure everybody's fully informed about the process.
And so just to clarify, is there, can you talk about the cycle of this? Does it, do all the plans for the entire school year need to be laid out in advance by a certain date? Otherwise, you know, you can't ask for more money? Or is it sort of an ongoing thing? How does that work?
It is ongoing, and that's a good clarifying question. There isn't, we try to put a drop, a date on it to, so that schools are getting it in. But if they don't get it in by a specific date, for example, that doesn't mean they aren't eligible to use the funds. They are annually done. There is some rollover in Title I that's adjusted across the system if it's not used, but we're encouraging, of course, all schools to use it. But if they're allocated a certain amount, the district is required to do the certain amount to the school.
And what is that annual date approximately?
So around August 30th, or June 30th, and then it can roll into some of the summer months as well.
Okay. And when you say allocated, I guess I'm not quite sure.
There's a percentage, there's a formula.
Okay.
And we can provide more detail if you'd like, but there's a specific formula that the Title I office must abide by when they allocate funds to schools. So it's not something the district sets, it's a Title I.
From Albany, or?
Well, it's federal dollars. So, but it trickles through, but yes, but it is monitored highly by all the offices, so everything we do is monitored via New York State, but it's federal dollars.
And one thing I should add, that while we report all our grant funds and our A-funds at the same time, most districts don't. And the one we have the most control over are our A-funds, the some 700 million, which is what the draft budget that we gave to the board. The other is reporting grants to you, so you know it, but that is less of our conversation about what we control at this point.
And also to clarify, so one of the things I worry about is, because I have heard different conversations at different schools, one school seems to be on top of it, submitting their plans, and another not so much, and then they're like, "Well, how do we do this?" Is it the principal who kind of says you need to, or is it the PTA? Or is it, you know, how do people know how to do it and when the deadline is? Who's on top of that? And how do we clarify that for the whole district?
So for clarity, it is the Office of Parent Engagement in collaboration with the Title I office. We're also required to inform families, which we do at the beginning of year, about the allocation of the dollars. It is through school-based planning teams, so you have to have parent engagement, and that's our vehicle for that to occur. Each school is a little bit different, the school-based planning teams are, of course, structured similarly, but, so we're working with parent engagement and the schools, and the school chiefs, to ensure the quality of the plan. So that is something that we're working on with both offices. And like I said, we've been engaging with the parent councils, but also the state is monitoring that.
So the variability, sounds like it's mainly due to parent membership and school-based planning.
It could be parent membership, but it's all, yes, but also it's based on need, the activities, what the school's doing, when activities are occurring, what's the tradition in the buildings. So it's different factors. But that's our role, is to support schools to make decisions and make sure that the money is spent.
So one final question.
Okay.
Is it possible, or maybe it's already happening, but I'm not aware of it, again, I've heard conversations at different schools where one set of parents is like, "Well, I don't know how to do this," and others like, "Yeah, we got it." Is there a Is there a way in which parents, or school-based, or there's shared information, so people have models and kind of understand which are allowable and which are not, and so that people can educate each other about how to be successful with the, with the cycle and the activities being put together?
Yes, I mean, I think that's something we have to continue to improve on, but I will say that, oh, the beginning of last year, as Title I has been saying, also monitoring that we are doing that, we have done more training with that, and as a matter of fact, at the end of May, we are doing a title, we're having, inviting families, it's just something we're planning now, so that we can review all the title grants, so that people can have input into and understand all of the title grants, including Title I, because we have two, three, and four as well.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask everyone if they have other questions on Title I, but let me ask a follow-up question, make sure, test for understanding.
Okay.
You just referred to a training session for parents, is it specifically, are you specifically asking the parent representatives to the school-based planning teams to come to this training? And connected to that, is the school-based planning executive committee, team executive committee involved in planning, orchestrating that training?
Yes, I think that, so we've been in touch with, for example, Makita from PAC. This year, we are, we're required to, in the beginning of the school year, for example, at one of the first events, that they had to engage and show the training module we had for Title I. On an ongoing basis, I know you know this, is the executive school-based planning team and PAC had started the compliance report about how this occurred, who was signing off. As we're trying to dig deeper and do a better job, that's what we're talking about for the end of May, where we're going to invite school-based planning team families, and a representative from the PTO or PTA to come directly to a meeting, so we can do a needs assessment, and get their feedback, A, on what are our priorities as we talk about it, and then there's a second meeting to say, this is how, based on your feedback, how we're recommending to spend the dollars in Title.
Any other questions on this Title I question that Commissioner Hallmark raised? We're good with that? Any other follow-up questions on the written questions and answers provided? Seeing none, then, let's start with section three. Commissioner Davis, would you like to start us off?
Section four.
I'm sorry, I missed, I was thinking four, I said three. Commissioner Davis?
I did have one additional from the previous. I just want to say for the record, that I'd like to see 28 persons for the special education reorganization program, so I just want that on the record, to have 28. The other question I had is, last time, we learned that the number of overdue annual reviews for special education went down, but there's about 146 left. Have more of those been taken care of since last time?
I can't give you a number, but they're going on right now. It's a scale of 24.
To go on for this section, I was looking at the vacancies, and I see that there's 300, 1,300 per diem substitutes that we use in the district, and I was wondering, how many substitutes, in a child's day, are they sitting before during the school year versus a regular educator that's been hired?
Harry, and I'll let you try to answer that, we probably don't have data on an individual child's, how many substitutes there are, but, Harry?
Yes, Superintendent. First and foremost, 1,300 is just the number of folks that are in our database. These are not all active subs every day. So in essence, what you have is that 1,300 are the people that are signed up to be a per diem substitute. They may sub one day out of the year, they may sub two days out of the year, they may not sub at all in the year. What you'll also find in that response is that roughly right, there's 500 or so certified retiree teachers. So what we try to do, instead of putting a non-certified sub in front of a classroom, we make sure that we target first, a retiree who has certification in a specific tenure area, so that they have the educational background, as well as the certifications that are required by the New York State law to teach.
And I think also, you said about 72 of the?
Per diem subs were converted to?
Are converted to?
That's correct.
But how many in per year? If it's not 1,300 that are being used per year, is it like 500, so only 72 of them?
Yeah, I mean, so if you're saying active subs per year, okay, and these are subs in a long-term assignment, 15 or more days, you're talking roughly between, I'd say, 400 subs in that particular category.
And so whether we're, whether there is a sub in the position, there, we've allotted money for 1,300 subs?
No, no, again, they only get paid if they work, okay? But the 1,300 are the number of folks that are registered in the system. So if you're not, you're not working, we're not pulling in 1,300 subs every day.
Okay, so how much is the sub line then?
The sub line roughly right is about somewhere between nine and 10 million dollars, and I look for my CFO to kind of quote me on that, or to be accurate on that, but the per diem sub line is roughly right about, I'd say about 10 million dollars. CFO?
Are you talking for this year, or?
For the 19, yeah, budgeted for 1920.
Yeah. I think it's about nine, nine, 9.8 or something like that?
Seven point six.
I'm sorry, okay.
Seven point six.
Can you point to the section you're looking in?
It's page three, section three, page 19.
And if my colleagues, if you're referencing a question already submitted, could you, for our clerk, make sure you indicate what question you're asking for elaboration on, just so that she can put it up here on the screen?
If you scroll up a little bit more. There you go. The second column from the right. So substitute teacher budget is made up of, is two pieces. One, because the RTA contract allows for every teacher to be eligible for 10 days of time off, that's what they're entitled to. So, you know, you take that number, you multiply it out, based upon historic information and what we had presented in our structural budget gap analysis, you will see that about 6 million dollars of that number is what gets used. Now, there are other substitutes that we use that are filling in vacant positions, so because the FTE is budgeted, the dollars is tied to the FTE. So when you look at our actual expenditure for substitute, it may be like 13, 14 million dollars. But the piece you see here is a piece that actually relates to the contract where teachers are allowed the 10 days. So as we go through, as we go through, and they're filling a vacant position, then the dollars gets moved from the FTE to the substitute budget. So there are two components of that. Those substitutes that are filling in a vacant position, and those substitutes that are coming in because a teacher is absent.
Okay, so I guess I'm trying to understand, are we using subs for vacant positions instead of hiring, or how many positions instead of hiring somebody full-time?
So we are using subs. The two major causes, as far as sub usage is concerned, is for number one, vacancies, and then number two, absences, okay? So those are the two root causals of the uses of per diem subs. Again, for vacancies, again, part of the thought processes is that, as we get through to the hard-to-fill areas, okay, again, we want to put a per diem sub in that spot, and again, what we do is we target retiree per diem subs who are certified, before we go to a non-certified sub. But again, the two root causals, vacancies and absences.
So that would be hard to, you said hard-to-fill vacancies?
Yeah, hard-to-fill vacancies, and again, those will be a lot of your technical positions in addition to that, as you go through and you try to hire all your top teachers during the June, July, August timeframes, as you get into the September months, it's harder and harder to fill with a bona fide certified teacher. So that's when you start to use your per diem subs.
Okay, and how many vacancies do we have like that?
I would tell you that roughly right, from a vacancy standpoint, as of two months ago, we stopped hiring, okay, only to fill critical positions, because we knew that we have a budget situation here, and the risk of, the more you hire, you may have to let or lay people off. So we basically stopped hiring. So I'd say roughly right, we probably got about 100 and, I'd say about 50 bona fide vacancies that are on the table as we speak, and again, that was by design, so that we did not want to hire around the February timeframe, knowing that we'd have to lay more people off.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Commissioner Hallmark, do you have a next question? I didn't catch the gesture. Commissioner Shepherd?
Yes?
So I have a number of questions. All the questions that I put forth, I do want them answered in writing, so I'm not going to go through them tonight. But I do want to say, just in regards to the FTEs that I've asked for, for reading, I guess I just have a statement. I mean, we have so many reading teachers or FTEs positions, hours, that are being cut in multiple schools this year, but as I look at the budget supplement that I was given, even our schools that had good standing, according to the 17, 18 years, still have very low numbers, percentages of students that were reading proficient. So I just really want to understand what's the rationale behind us cutting FTEs in reading. I also need to understand the rationale behind cutting FTEs in music and art. We have an art and integrated, arts and tech integrated school, and I see that FTEs are being cut in tech. So I'm just, I'm confused, because the enrollment is still the same, if not more, in that school. So just my whole list of questions, I need them answered in writing, before I can even have a dialogue with the administration.
Let's give them a chance to answer the question about, specifically about the reading teachers first?
Well, I'll let staff answer about the reading teachers, but remember, enrollment has dropped approximately 1,500, 2,000 kids over the past few years, and we've been hiring staff instead of adjusting the staff. So while there are cuts across the board, it's because enrollment has declined, not because we're reducing services. That's the first part. Now, if staff wants to talk specifically about music or reading teachers, go ahead.
Commissioner Shepherd, in terms of reading teachers, when we looked at the ratio, what happens is some of those reading positions move to intervention positions. So overall, there may be no change. So we have to look deeper at each school, and then you'll see that maybe they had two reading teachers and two interventions, and next year, they may have three interventions and one reading teacher. But the work will still happen to support students for response to intervention.
So while I understand that enrollment has gone down per the schools, I just want to say that even enrollment has gone down, and we've had that number of supports, and our numbers and percentages and proficiency are still struggling. So for me, this is why, this is why I just would prefer to have the answers in writing, because it just doesn't make sense to me. And although I understand that the position or the services may have changed over to a different title, it still doesn't seem like it's enough. So I would just like the opportunity to take a look at those numbers.
Okay, we'll get that in writing to you, to everybody.
Could you spend a little more time describing, though, the, I mean, we're moving them to the position of intervention teachers, and they are reading certified. What function did they serve prior? They were being pushed in for reading intervention, were they not, prior to this, like, accounting change?
So not all of the people in the reading position are certified as reading teachers, but they were performing the work that we needed to do for reading intervention. And so that's why we were able to put them in intervention position titles. But they will still push in and support students in English Language Arts and Mathematics.
Okay. So in response to Commissioner Shepherd's question, you should be able to do a before and after chart of some kind?
Mm-hmm.
Great, thank you. Commissioner White?
Yeah, just a quick follow-up on Commissioner Shepherd's question. While, Dan, I understand, and your reporting on the enrollment numbers is no doubt accurate, I think it only proves her point. I mean, we've got fewer kids, but the results are the same, but we had more staff members, and still, the numbers are bad, across the board, not any in particular school. So, so one would think that the last thing that we need to do, just because then, there's fewer students, but the problem hasn't gotten any better. Now, now, let me just finish this point, maybe it is, we don't need to hire more, I don't know if that's correct, maybe they need to be deployed more effectively, maybe you can make that argument. But I'm really struggling to understand, you know, if you were to say, hey, listen, we just don't have the money, I could understand that. But what you're essentially saying is, we've got fewer students, and we've hired a lot more staff, but the performance indicators are worse.
Well, no, not worse, okay? There are two things, they're not good, the performance indicators are not good, which tells you a couple of things. One, the deployment may not be correct, and we're having to do that, or two, the answer to getting scores up may not be just hiring more people.
Yep.
And it's what they're teaching, how they're teaching.
Curriculum.
And the whole curriculum. And the third answer is, we do have a shortage of money, that we can't spend more money that we don't have. But in this case, it really is about deployment, and really, people's doing it a different way. The other thing is, you're not going to have results in one year, no matter which way you do it.
Well, and that was just a follow-up. I, I'm convinced that the D's report, if it, if it did anything, from my perspective, it is this, it has focused my attention on whether we got, how we deploy our staff, and how we train our staff with respect to curriculum, what our strategies are on it. Maybe the reason why the number hasn't gone up, one could argue, is, look, we put all this, we've probably quadrupled the number of reading instructors, probably more than that, and we're on a treadmill, we're really not going anywhere. Could it be, by process of elimination, that this sort of Dr. Jekyll, Mr. Hyde, this very schizophrenic way in which we've said, okay, centralized curriculum, no centralized curriculum? We've really, we have yet to really figure out what we're doing there, and maybe, maybe that is the answer. But I think Commissioner Shepherd is correct, the response probably is not appropriately dialogued here, but there really does need to be some study, by process of elimination, of why we don't seem to be improving, notwithstanding the fact that we have, I think this is your point, maybe, we have invested a lot into reading, and the numbers really haven't gotten much better.
But he's also had, he's also had schools going through.
Sorry, I can't hear you, if you could speak into the mic?
I was just telling him about his point.
So, but I think she makes excellent point, something in writing, and maybe even ultimately a presentation, because where are we going with this? So my question was, if you turn to, and this is stylistic, page, section 20, page 28, I don't know if I'm operating on the latest, this is a supplemental profiles? It's for, I can tell you the school, it's for the Leadership Academy for Young Men? I'm sorry, I know, this has probably changed a bit, but it's section, it says section 20, page 28, it's the profile of schools. That's what it says at the bar. profile of schools. That's what it says at the bottom.
No, it's section twenty in the supplemental.
In the supplemental. That's, I'm sorry, that's what I'm using. That's what I've been working with. So, but in any event, I think you'll be able to follow me, because it's probably set up the same. I just noticed that, and again, this is all stylistic, but if you look at like attendance, it goes two thousand seventeen, and it goes all the way down to two thousand fourteen. But, if you look at accountability status, it goes the reverse. You're probably going to look at any one of these charts, you'll see what I'm saying? If you look, if you look at graduation rates, for example, it goes two thousand thirteen, fourteen, fourteen, fifteen, fifteen, sixteen, sixteen, right, seventeen, seventeen, eighteen, right? You follow me? But, then, on other measures, it's just the reverse. Do you see what I'm saying?
Well-
And I want to know what the logic is behind that, because it's kind of harder on the reader. And you're trying to follow the logic and the flow, and I'm just wondering, is there an explanation behind that? Why would they all be going in the same direction?
No logic, but we can change that.
Again, just purely stylistic, and you've got to remember, a lot of this stuff is accessible to the laypeople, and your performance indicators are what people are going to be looking at. What's your attendance? What's your graduation rate? It seems like some are going one way, another going another way. So, just-
On the final document, you'll have all going in the same direction.
Now, so, but my question relates to this particular school, but it could relate to any school. I think at some point, and this is really more of a comment, we have to look at the results, right? And this is, this comment is not going to surprise many of you, because I've made this before. And, you know, people could say, well, why are you talking about a particular school? Well, it's there for everybody to see. At some point, and we really made a commitment to this model. I know Carmen has really worked really hard, predecessors have worked really hard. I know the principal has put his heart and his soul and his, all of his talent into this. But, I'm just going to be honest with you. Look at the results. At some point, you've got to say, is this working, or is it not working? I mean, you look at the cohort, two thousand four graduation rate, it's fifty-four percent. You look at the attendance rate, it went from eighty-three to eighty-one percent. And, you know, anybody who knows this business of attendance, you know eighty-one percent is like a failing grade. It's just, it's not what's going to turn a school around. So, it's almost a bit rhetorical, but there is a question in this. At what point, Mr. Superintendent, do you say, in your past experience in this one, okay, we've got to, you know, make a decision about whether this model is working? I'm not even talking about staff. I'm talking about whether the model is working.
But, I would say to you, I have said to you, by reducing the budget, and I didn't do that to reduce results. We still expect the results to go up, but it isn't a factor of just adding more staff to make the results go up. It's leadership, it's our district plan, it's individual plans. There's a lot that goes into it. And basically, we've been using the thing, well, we've got to add more staff. If the kids aren't reading, add more reading teachers, instead of saying, well, maybe it's the curriculum, maybe it's that the teachers have to stay with kids for two years instead of one year. And, we have to look at it school by school, and not all the schools, because some schools are doing well. But, the correlation between the number of teachers they have and how well they're doing is not the correlation the board's looking for.
No, and I just want to be clear, that wasn't really where I was going with this. My question is more generically, and you could use this school's example, or a number of others. But, this was a particular, I use this one because several years ago, the board and the superintendent, I think it was Jean-Claude, that created this school? Was it Jean-Claude?
It was his idea.
Yeah, it was his idea. Decided that we were going to create a model just for men, young men. And we caught a lot of flack for that in some corners. But, my question is, it could be this school or any other school. At what point does educational leader say, okay, I'm looking at all the indicators, the performance indicators. Look at the ELA and Mascourse. I mean, just, it speaks volumes. Two point six percent overall are proficient, right? So, mine is not a question of, you know, staff and whether you put a different leader in there, or the same leaders, or ten more teachers, or even reading instructors. My question is, after you do your analysis of what has worked and what has not worked, when do you say, again, it could be this school or some other school, is there a period of time, what do you look at? Because I don't think, I don't think any superintendent has said, okay, enough is enough. Not, I'm not even talking about this school. When do you say, we've changed chiefs, right? We've provided support? So, my question's more general. When do you say, what's your analysis for saying, I'm going to shift gears?
Right, right now. You have to shift gears right now when people aren't being successful. And that isn't to say off with their heads or anything like that, but you have to make judgments based on individual schools. Our debate right now is about a budget to move forward for next, next year. Some of it's related, some of it's not related. But, you have to not, no matter how far down the wrong road, you turn around. And that should happen all the time for many leaders, that there's a pattern of no success or very slow success. And I'd agree with the board. When schools are stuck at two or three or four percent, you're not going in the right direction. It's not going fast enough, and you can't say, well, we're at three percent, and a ten percent increase will take us to three point three. Well, at that speed, it'll be fifty years before you're where you want to be. So, there has to be a whole different look at what our expectations are. And certainly, our expectations should be forty to fifty percent jump in order to start getting schools moving.
So, I'm going to try to ask a follow-on question to that, and to frame it differently. What you have said, Mr. Longard, is very consistent with what the Distinguished Educators Report has been trying to call out, right? That it's, it's not the money, it's how we deploy our resources, it's how we set expectations, that sort of thing. So, and so, the conversations about school improvement, as happens every year with every board configuration, becomes conflated with conversation about the budget. So, I want to ask, because the chiefs were all part of writing the response to the Distinguished Educators Report, is there anything in particular, anything special you can say about the process that, and thought process that went into producing the final budget numbers for your schools, having crafted the, your response to the Distinguished Educator Report? How do those two pieces fit together? And how did they happen as a function of putting this book together?
Okay. Let me start, and then they can talk specifically. Our design, number one, is to have revenues and expenditures for the first time match, and we still didn't do that. We're still eight million dollars off, but that was one. The second was to do no damage to schools and children where they are. And so, when these people spent hours and hours and days and days, they reduced based on enrollment declines, not on the fact that we don't think A or B is working. And they went entirely across the district with reductions, and they can talk about it. If we had another billion dollars, would we spend more money and try to think of new ways to do it? Probably so. But, we're in a finite organization, and I am convinced, it's not, and this is, you've known me longer than most. I've never argued this before, that it's not just about money. I spent my whole career saying it was just about money, and I'm telling you that it's about money, but it's not just about money. And we're in a position where we can improve results with the money that we're taking in to match our revenues and expenditures. Now, I don't know if-
Well, and just to piggyback on that, I'll talk about my network, Network Three. It's eleven schools and two programs. And if you look at the combined allocation of reading and intervention, my network totals forty-four point nine FTEs. That's just, if you go through and you count up all of those, for this current year. For next year, we looked at, how do we look at enrollment, look at accountability status, look at the unique things that go along with each school, and we tried to right-size schools across the board. So, for next year, my network actually went up a point five, when you look at the FTEs that are the reading and intervention combined. I'll give you some examples. Edison went from just two FTEs, and they had an increase to four. So, that's to support their cohort model and the way they're restructuring. Two School, which is a TSI, the old focus school title, went from six combined to four. So, it was a shifting of and looking at the needs at every school, the enrollment, the accountability status, and what is specifically needed. And I think each of us can talk about our networks in a way that you can, you can kind of begin to see either a balance or a slight shift. So, the number actually went up a point five among the thirteen sites that I work with.
And I could say, I'm about the same thing. I think I'm a point five, I'm actually even across the board, actually, for all my schools. There were some variants, but you take Integrated Arts, that went up plus three of intervention supports for next year. So, there are some schools, when we took a look at it, trying to be a little bit more equity-driven in terms of how we reallocated our resources.
Anyone else want to respond?
You're happy? It's the same, that we've balanced them. And so, there's a plus in some schools where it's a negative, but overall, it's a zero gain.
So, I just want to respond to that. So, I went through every single school and every program, and I've seen the increase. It hasn't fluctuated much for many of the schools. But, if we're talking about that we are replacing the supports in a different position, and that position is not specified specifically for one thing that we're trying to do. For instance, just because we're on reading right now, they've gone to intervention specialists. So, that means to me that they're going to be doing more things than just reading. So, that actually doesn't help me in this area. And to your point, Dan, in regards to just having staff just to have them, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is that the staff is supposed to provide a certain support. And if we're getting the results that we're getting with the number of students, and with the number of FTEs that we have, I would like to know what is the rationale? That's my question. What's the rationale behind cutting them? If it is curriculum, then we need to know that, because we are also in charge of making sure that the curriculum is aligned with what we're trying to do, which is increase these results. And so, I just want to correct that, that I'm not just talking about having staff just to have them. But, I also do have an issue with the fact that I feel like we're bargaining things that shouldn't be bargained. So, I mean, reading teachers, reading FTEs, art, music, I see physical education, just all the things that keep kids learning and growing. I feel like we're using those things as bargaining chips when there are many other things in this district that we should be discussing in regards to cutting. And so, again, I'll just, I'll wait for my responses in writing, but I wanted to clear the record that I'm not just talking about having staff just to have them. I mean, it does correlate with the results. I'm looking at them right here in black and white.
Same topic?
Same topic.
Same topic. Okay. Follow-up question? Go ahead.
Yep. So, getting back to, again, by way of example, this particular school, and for those who are like, oh, my God, he's talking about a particular school. Hey, it's there. I mean, it's our obligation to discuss these things. And this is not a reflection on anybody's effort, because I've been to that school, as you know, countless times, and there's great people working on improving. But, and let me also add, what I say about this particular school, I could probably say about five or six others. My question is, and it doesn't have to be answered today, is, when do you bite the bullet and say, this particular, and people who know me know I'm not like a corporate kind of guy, but when do you say, this particular division is not working? We're not getting a return on our investment, our investment in children. You know, these aren't widgets. So, all the more reason why you would want to say, stop, let's do something different. And let me just say, I realize this is very complicated. That's why I said, give us some guidance. Because, for example, some of you may recall, we just celebrated a school, and I wish Vice President Elliott was here, because she was at that particular school, number nine, countless times with me. And those of you who perhaps were around, we thought at a certain point, mm, I don't know if they're going to make it, right? So, I, that's why I asked you, when do you, in your considered experience and judgment, make that kind of decision? And let me also add, and I'm glad there was a certain amount of patience that was exercised by a number of superintendents, that allowed her to do what she did, and that allowed us to celebrate that. But, I can look at this data and say, I know it's not just the person in the, or the people in the building. If you look at, and again, I apologize, I, this is the supplemental, section twenty, page twenty-eight, it shows. I mean, if you look at the number of, from two thousand fourteen to two thousand seventeen, eighteen, the number of students with disabilities has gone up, the number of English Language Learners has gone up, right? So, I appreciate the fact that you can't just say, okay, we're going to close this division because people in those buildings weren't doing what they need to do. The problem could have been us. But, at some point, somebody's got to say, this is, without regard to particular people or pointing the finger blame, it's not working. And people talk about the fact that the board micromanages. Well, nobody on this board has said, close this school or close that school. But, that's why we're with, not you in particular, Dan, but somebody's got to really make the considered decision about what to do when we have schools like this where we are not, and I use a corporate phrase, getting a return on investment, and that investment is in our children. They're not getting it. So, I don't know.
I hear what you're saying. I think ultimately, for me, there's been multiple chiefs at this school as well. And if you look at the enrollment from two thousand thirteen to fourteen, we have three hundred and thirty-three kids to now six hundred and fifty-three kids.
Yep, I see it.
So, my question is, are we being true to the program from its inception? And I think that's what we have to look at in terms of the model. Have we been true to that program? And is that the reason why? And I think that's the role of the chief, is to kind of work with the principal to say, okay, what's the, what's the model, and are we being true to it? Or, what have we done? What type of barriers have we put in place that took you away from doing the true model of what you were looking to do?
I heard something in Commissioner White's question. Again, it's not strictly speaking budget-related, but this is the forum that always brings those issues to the fore. The question was, you know, will, will the administration at any point ever present a case to the Board of Education that says, well, let's use your example, and only as an example, folks. Young Men, the Leadership Academy for Young Men, as a model, either isn't working, or we cannot implement it with any real fidelity. Therefore, the proposal is X, Y, Z. I think the question that you're hearing is, one, really questioning the, the will or the initiative of the administration to, well, I'll use an army, fisher cut bait, right?
Fisher cut bait.
Fisher cut bait. And will, will the administration bring that proposal to us, or do we have to watch it keep flowering?
No. I could bring it to you tomorrow. Somebody's brought it to you already. The Distinguished Educator gave you eighty-four things that have to be done. Now, they don't have to be done in every single school, but they have to be done. What he hasn't said, I'll say to you, they all have to be done. They have to all, as Carmen said, they have to be done correctly. They have to all, as Carmen said, they have to be done correctly. And the truth is, they all have to be done right away. Well, we don't have that capacity to do that. Do we have the will? That's something you'll decide. As far as coming to you, I'll even come to you and say that a couple of schools should be closed. Might come to you and say neighborhood schools. There's, there are no simple answers. He came up with not three things to do, with 84 things to do. I can maybe get that list down. But the truth is, to be successful the way the seven of you want, do all 84 at once, do it perfectly tomorrow. And short of at least us all being committed to doing them and getting them done is the way to go. And whether an administrator, I'm a short timer, so I can have the guts to say to you, I guess. I don't know anybody else that will. But again, you've got the list. You know regardless of whose name on it, that's the things that have to be done. And anything else, we're sort of wasting our time because we've got to get busy on those.
I just wanted to see if we could get like the definitive answer on that. So Commissioner Davis, your next question?
It's a two-part. I have the expanded learning time. I believe you gave us a handout last time with a two-pager. It's been restored. So does that mean that all programs have been restored? Are in good standing schools, they don't have it? Or has everyone have ELT back at this point?
Now, again, remember what I gave you is suggestions for that 5.9 million. So none of it is set until the board says, "Okay, spend this money this way." But what, Beth, you want to talk about what the, what did we replace? 1.1 million and 400,000?
Yep. You want me to?
Yeah.
So for clarity around the ELT, the expanded time itself for the hourly pay, we restored 917 rise. And Number Eight School is already included. All that being said, there is a list. There are three schools that no, there were two schools that no longer were going to do expanded learning, which was Number 45 School and Number Three School. And then 29, we did not restore. It was a small school. And we felt as though at this point, the school was was comfortable with the decision to not have ELT added back to that school. So that's where we landed as of right now in the recommendation that you have.
Okay, so this is past. There'll be about three schools that won't have the ELT.
Correct, currently, correct. And at this point, that was the decision with the school and the school chiefs on all three of those.
Okay. The other thing is, I had asked about program evaluations for North Star and for the Hillside Agency that are...
Is that question in our questionnaire?
I'm sorry, it's 217, which is page 18. So in reviewing the implementation plan for special education last time, I wanted to understand more about what's being done for the K-6. And according to the response that I received, North Star's program evaluation was well and found to be effective for students, but Hillside's was not. And in the reorganization plan from last time, I didn't really see what's being done for K through six for children with disabilities. So I'd like to understand what we're doing.
Good evening, Commissioner. The program that has historically been at school number two, the engagement with Hillside Children's Center has been one to provide the therapeutic services for all of those students. Going forward, the district has decided to disengage from Hillside on that particular K-6 program. We will provide all services to those children ourselves in a K to one to two program model.
Do we take additional staff to do that?
Yes. We will make sure that we have all therapeutic staff, which are social workers, psychologists, behavioral support staff. And we will also have parent professionals and teachers, of course, in each classroom.
Is anything going to be produced to talk about K-6 in general? Because again, the implementation plan didn't really address K-6 overall.
The program design will be totally, you know, expanded upon and will be provided if we would like it.
Yeah, I'd like to see that.
Okay.
Dr. Golden, can you explain how Bullet Number Two, you have Classroom One had zero students? Is that, that's not a typo, is it?
Well, no. So the program at, that Hillside was providing the support to as well as admissions criteria for. That program could, had a capacity of 18 students. And all of those students who went were based on referrals. So if you had, if you didn't have referrals for that grade level, you wouldn't have children in that grade level. If you had referrals that were inappropriate for the program, then they would not have been admitted.
I'm still stumped why it's listed as Classroom One and has no students.
If it's, if, okay, so it says Classroom One Grade One, which is probably first grade, right? At the first grade, there were no students in that, at that particular grade level. But they're, you know what I'm saying? So it depends on the grade level needs of children and the referrals.
So Classroom One might have had all second graders and no first graders. Oh.
Yes.
That's not something you could divine from reading this.
Okay.
Okay. Commissioner Davis, any more questions on that point?
No.
Commissioner Hallmark? Commissioner Shepard? That's a no. Commissioner White?
We're still on Section Four, right?
Yes, we are.
Okay, so just an observation. And I wish Commissioner LeBron were here, although she's not feeling well. So her absence is excused, but she would probably enjoy hearing me say this. If you look at Edison, and if you look at, and again, I'm dealing with the supplementals, Page, Section 20, Page 41, that's Edison. And then if you look to East, so to keep both of these pages in mind, the upper school, which is Section 20, Page 56, you see almost the inverse is happening, right? And I, there's no shame in my game to say that East has fewer students. I think that was the right move. I do. I think it was the right move to invest in our most valuable resource, which is our children. I have no qualms about that. But if you want, and I was talking to Chief of Staff Simmons about this. If, and I think I've even happened at a meeting that was approved by your predecessor, I've spoken to the chiefs about this. If you look at those two pages, 41 and 56, you see the reverse is happening, right? East is getting fewer students. And I, again, I have no shame in that game. I think that was the right thing to do. And Joel Seligman said to us, "We're not going to have 1,800 students. We're just not going to do it. You cannot responsibly educate kids." So they methodically, and without shame, reduced the size of their students. And you look up at the top of Page 56 and you see the results, the dramatic results, right? They also, you can see by the numbers, they also reduced the number of students with disabilities and ELLs. They're the, one of the lowest in one category and then the highest in one of the other categories. But if you look at the evolution, you can really just put the charts up against each other. You see what's happened at Edison on Page 41. They've gone from 625 students in 2013, '14 to 1,716. I'm looking at these numbers, so if this, the numbers are not right, somebody's...
Oh, they're correct.
Are you saying these numbers aren't right? You know, I look at people. You went like this when I, I'm just relying on the numbers.
So it is correct, but you have to recall that about three years ago, Edison was broken up into three small schools, right?
Well, no, I understand that Robert Brown and so forth. But in that building, they had, there were like four schools, I think, right?
Each was...
Each had 625? Is that...
We can pull the numbers and make sure it's right.
But you have to speak into the mic.
So what she's saying is, and I remember this, at a certain point in its history, they had broken it up and went from the old Edison that my brother attended decades ago to the new Edison, which was four subschools. One of them was Robert Brown, and I forgot what the other ones were. I'm, again, I'm going on the numbers that you guys gave me. It says 625. I'm assuming that's in that building. Maybe it's not, but that's what it says. And then it says for the next year, it was 700. The next year, 1,674. And then, then the next year, 1,700.
And I'll tell you, and all of you know that, we today, we're talking about how are we going to make Edison smaller? And we're looking at various ways to do it. It would make sense. But you certainly can't compare East to Edison because, one, they've got a lot of money. Two, we haven't balanced ESL or ELL kids and special ed kids. And again, East is doing a good job with the kids they have there. Edison, we have to do something different with it. And it'll take a number of things. But where do you put 1,000 kids? And we have to look, and we're looking at various places of how would you make East, or make Edison smaller? Because that's one of the places that's getting hard to run.
And that's what I wanted my colleagues to hear, my observation that, you know, you and I were talking about this other morning. All we're doing is, it's a bit of a shell game. We're taking our challenged populations, our students where we have, placement has nowhere to send them. And now, instead of, because East is responsibly saying, "No, we're not going to do that to kids, we're shutting the doors or we're limiting the number of students we have," right? That's the responsible, people say, "Ah, they're just, they're boosting the numbers." They're doing the responsible thing. Having 1,800, 1,700 students in one building, you all know, I look at people's faces. I saw Walter Larkin at a Men of Color meeting the other day. I saw his successor. And their faces reveal that it's almost an impossible task. And what I'm saying to my colleagues is, this is the time to be bold. We have, I've said this to you, we have that big, big building over there in Charlotte. We need to open up another comprehensive high school. We can't keep on shifting populations back and forth. I think Commissioner Shepard, you and I are agreement on this. We got to stop that. And we can't, we can't wait until it gets better because all we're doing is we're sending a message to Walter and to, what's his name? Jacob? That despite their best efforts, we're going to put them on a treadmill where they're going to end up being the next East High School. And I'm saying, we shouldn't wait for receivership or for the state to say, "We got to do something." The only way to fix this, you've got the best leaders in the world in that building. You do, I'm convinced of that. They're good people, they're hard workers. The only way to fix that is to open up another comprehensive high school because there's no other place to put people. And look at their number of populations. Students with disabilities has gone up. Number of students with English language learners has gone up. There's no way to fix this other than opening up another high school.
No disagreement, except that I tomorrow can't send 900 kids someplace else. We have to plan and make, but it makes sense to make Edison smaller. Again, it's our only technical high school, so you got to weigh that. Can we make another school a technical high school? But certainly, I wouldn't argue for 18 or 2,000 kids in one building. But it doesn't happen overnight.
To follow up on that comment, that it doesn't happen overnight, clearly, it's not your proposal to change, to close a school in 2019, '20 school year. And it's unlikely that we would change horses midstream here. We wouldn't close a school in the middle of the school year. So any planning for a school closure would happen for 2020, '21. Is that right?
At some point, again, we're not talking about the budget, but at some point, I'm going to give you recommendations about, the board should have a four or five-year plan about what schools should be open, what should be closed. The advantage of Rochester is you have small schools. The disadvantage is it's going to be expensive, so we have to weigh that with everything else. But you have one in Edison that is really too large. And that, to me, would be one of the first ones you take a look at. And with the year of planning, could probably do something different.
And Commissioner Powell, I just want to be clear. Although I was talking about leadership, this thought that I and others have about, you know, opening up another comprehensive high school, it's not contingent upon anybody saying, "Okay, let's close leadership." You could move leadership to another building or morph it into a additional comprehensive high school. My, the point I was just making here is, is Dan obviously sees as well that this idea that, because I remember Annabelle being over, y'all remember Annabelle being at East? It was about 1,600, 1,700 students. And I remember being at, they were at the championship game in Glenn's Falls or whatever, and getting the letter from the commissioner saying, "You've got these six options." And it wasn't, you know, people can point fingers at blame. It was just the school is just too big. So Dan, this is as much for your ears as it is for my colleagues because when we interview our superintendents, potential superintendents, we have to talk to them about what do you do when you have a, what, is a school too big when it has 1,800 students in it? And what do you do?
Well, some schools can be run with 1,800. It's the leadership, it's the design, it's how exciting is the teaching going on and all that? So it's not just one thing. But Edison, it makes it very difficult. And I'm going to have conversations with Jacob about what he senses and all that because you're right, we don't want to burn out teachers or administrators trying to keep something going that may not be viable.
Still on Section Four until questions are exhausted? Commissioner Davis, do you have any questions for, in Section Four?
Is Section Four looking at the optics program at the Career and Tech? Is that also Section Four?
Is that considered part of the school or part of the program? I think that, I think much of the budget...
Ask your question, we'll see.
So this is a 2.2 on Page 13. And I just want, I want to know, there was a student who came to one of the hearings and was concerned that the district would have programs and offerings that would lead to being able to work right out of high school and to develop skills. And one of those is at East. I think they have an optics grant, and so they have the vision optics. And I just wanted to know, is there any intent for the State Department to stop funding of that in 1920? Are we still going to fund the career and technical that we have at East? Specifically looking at the vision, the vision program because through it, we not only, students develop a trade, but in working there, they provide 2,000 pairs of glasses for free to students.
So the question is whether the program will continue even though the grant funding is expiring?
Well, it says were to discontinue, so I wasn't sure what that meant. Is it going to be discontinuing in 1920?
With regard to the grant itself, we never know year to year whether the grant is going to be continued or not. We have to wait for the state to inform us. We have to wait for the state to inform us whether that particular grant will continue on. So, as we stated within our response, the vision program, we feel absolutely would continue because of the give-back, if you will, to the district. At this point, we have distributed over two thousand pairs of glasses, and we have had successful results of those scholars moving into the vision field, into various positions, whether they're going on for secondary education or whether they're going directly into the labor force. With regard to the optics program, we would need to take another look at it with regard to whether or not it could be sustained. We are not seeing the same number of scholars moving in directly into the labor force.
Oh, okay.
So, we'd have to review it, and so that would be taken into consideration should the grant not be continued.
But we, if it isn't continued, there is another way. We are going to continue the vision part.
We would plan on it, just again, because of the success, and I heard that scholar very clearly when he spoke to us as well, looking for that type of an opportunity. And so, I think that we would try everything that we could within our power to see that program continue. Again, especially given the number of free glasses that are crafted for students of our CSD overall.
Thank you.
Does that answer?
Yes, I just wanted to make sure it was going, that we had made a way for the nineteen twenty budget to continue it.
Right now, again, we do not know the CSD is going to continue the grant or not, but we have built the expenditures within our general fund budget, and we continue to do that...
But you'll be able to adopt it if the state doesn't come through.
Absolutely.
That's why I wanted to make sure that we were gonna adopt it.
Okay, I'm sorry, misunderstood.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to make sure. Okay.
Commissioner Davis, you did hit on an important point that every board member should have tucked away in the back of their minds, and that is that we are so very heavily dependent on grant funding, and it does go away. And so, the goal is to always have a replacement grant to the extent we're able, but that doesn't, it's not always a seamless process. And that's why you'll actually see that over the course of the year, the budget, the, the total revenues and expenses actually grows because, from, from what we approve in the spring of every year, because new grants come in. So, sometimes it's strategic, it's a strategic decision to keep a program going even though we don't have a grant waiting in the wings on the, on the theory that we might be able to get a grant that will, will replace those funds over time. But in the meantime, we have to keep it going with, with our general fund dollars. Okay? Commissioner Hallmark? No questions? Commissioner Shepherd? Commissioner White?
Again, I apologize for still being in the supplemental. But if you look at number seventeen school, we, we spend a considerable amount of, this, it doesn't have a page on it. Well, section twenty, looks like page, yeah, page forty-eight. I'm sorry. Supplemental, section twenty, page forty-eight. And again, these comments could be made of any number of schools, but I'm focusing on this notion of community schools. It has become the rage nationally, from Albany and even here in Rochester. And again, it's about return on investment. I mean, we can't just, it's the flavor of the month, everybody wants to have a community school, but we gotta look at whether these things are generating the results over time. It'd be very unfair to say, okay, if a community school, and all of a sudden, things will be better. And if they're not right away, then let's go on to the next flavor. No one's saying that. But for those of you that were around, I sat at a meeting with Commissioner Elia, and I communicated to my colleagues, and she wanted specific things done. We were at number seventeen school, and she literally put her hand on the table and said, Van, tell your colleagues, you gotta get this done. And what she was asking for in that particular meeting was, Beth, you were there, I think, she was asking that we change our placement protocols for that school. That was at least two years ago. No? Some, give or take. And, and that school has had the wonderful support of our mayor, and a lot of other resources have been put into that school. And, and they have a great leader. They do. Caterina, she's a good, very committed leader, no doubt about that. But again, I, I'm using this conversation about budget to look at, you know, are we getting, and it sounds very corporate, but it's, it's a fair way to characterize this, are we getting a return on our investment? Because these are our kids, and we, we should make sure that our money is, is, is meaningful, how we invest it to our kids. So, so if you look at it, again, page forty-eight, you see that, and again, Caterina is an exceptional leader. This is no reflection on her. The, the, the total ELA scores are eight point four. It's certainly an improvement. There's clearly growth there. Math, it looks like there's some growth there as well. And then, but you look at attendance, it's eighty-seven percent. Now, I would've thought, given the demands, remember, there was, Willie, you may remember this, 'cause you weren't altogether crazy about the changes that we, some of you may remember that we implemented seventeen. There's real work done by the school leaders, by administration, and by the board. And, and, and it doesn't have to be answered, but I think at some point, and I'll be asking the, the, the superintendents to be, when do you say, wait a second? 'Cause, 'cause the danger here is, we could become accustomed to nominal improvement. We can become so enamored with our growth, which is, and I've heard you say this, one or two percent. So, so I, I just, Everton, and to Commissioner Powell, this is a fiscal question. It may not sound like it is, but I'm asking, when we look at this, and again, what I'm saying about this school could be said about any number of schools, who, who eventually says, wait a second, I know this community schools thing is all the rage, but it's not generating the results?
But see, here's what we're not doing. First of all, none of us are enamored with the results. There's nobody, I've been here a couple of months, nobody. Everybody knows what the results are. People wanna come and publish them again. We know what the results are. A building that has three or five percent, it's not where we want it to be. But when we look at community schools, which we know were, but in seventeen, I believe that there's only seventeen, eighteen percent of the kids that live in that neighborhood. And maybe I'm wrong with the statistic, and at some point, the board has to deal with the question, if we want community schools, should we have more neighborhood schools? Or, and this is just a thought that came from somebody, maybe you have community schools and kids could go to the community school at night in their neighborhood. I mean, it's a concept we've never really searched. It, it loses the teachers a little bit, but again, we know there's some positives in having community schools, but it means starting to say to parents, you're not gonna bus all over the city. Or we say to all community schools, you're open at night to any kid that lives in that, in that catch space. And so, again, it's, it's looking at the concept and maybe twisting a little bit, but we know that kids have to be involved in school for more than six hours. And, and it isn't all pain and all that. It should be fun things and things they like doing and instruct...
So, so, so Dan, and this is the benefit of, of my having been here at that meeting, that's exactly what we did. We, we, we said to placement, we passed a resolution that said, the kids, I'm paraphrasing it, and somebody can probably correct me on this, we basically said, we're gonna treat number seventeen differently. And placement, don't go messing around, we gotta prioritize kids that live in that neighborhood. So, so, so that's, that's my point. You and I and, and, and the board were thinking that, and, and then you look at the attendance rate. And this is what I'm talking about when I talk about critically analyzing whether we're getting return on, on this occasion, our investment in changing placement protocols. We totally said, no, 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 the standard rules that apply to everybody else are not gonna apply to Caterina and number seventeen school. And, and I just look at one measure, that's attendance, and it's eighty-seven percent. At a school, and again, Beth, I'm looking to you because I, I think you were at that table. Can you describe that resolution? If, Dan, do you mind if she...
No, no, not at all. I just stopped talking.
Thanks.
A couple of things. Yes, I was there, and yes, the board resolution does have it by neighborhood, and we did enrollment at the school to generate, so to protect them and make sure that placement was ensuring that kids from that neighborhood, we did do the larger swath of area, came into the school in accommodation with the Josanna neighborhood.
Yep, remember that.
I will say, in the early grades, we have made, I don't know the specific piece of data off the top of my head, but the K one and two has changed dramatically, including pre-K, on the number of kids from the neighborhood. So, that is a good piece of data for us to have, 'cause you won't see it maybe in the five, six, seven, because we haven't been doing it long enough. So, that's one thing. And they do have a dual-language program there, so you are gonna get kids from outside of their neighborhood. But the other thing about the absenteeism, I do wanna say this, because this is one of the reasons why they came out of receivership, is that they did have a reduction in chronic absenteeism that you might not see in this whole number, and that's one of the pieces of data that Caterina has spoken about. The other thing about the community schools, although there are additional dollars that went there, there is no question, and we are requesting that for the extended day as part of the, the community schools model, is that, that they're able to continue those services. And what you saw, that at one point, this school, when Caterina first got there, the principal, they were identified as a persistently dangerous school. So, although the, the improvement, I understand particularly around the instruction has been incremental, it certainly has grown, but these other factors have been minimized, as we, as you wanna say, as we continue to build the instructional program. So, it all, which I know you know, is interconnected, but from some clarity about the board resolution, the chronic absenteeism, the support for the expanded learning, and you can see the reductions from, the improvement in the culture has reduced those pieces around the persistently dangerous that they are off of now.
Okay. Related question? Okay, related.
So, I just did some quick math. I'm just using seventeen, 'cause this is the school that we're on. But a lot of the questions, like, I really wanna hear from the administration, maybe not tonight, maybe it'll come in writing, but as to, when, when we're talking about when President White says, like, critically looking at, what do these numbers even mean? So, I just did quick math on seventeen school, 'cause that's the topic that we're on. We're saying that the school came, came out of receivership, and I looked at ELA, and out of five hundred and fifty, this is just a number that I'm going off, it may have fluctuated a little bit, but five hundred and fifty students total, the, the number of students, whole number of students that are actually proficient is only forty-six out of five hundred and fifty-eight. And last year, it was thirty, so it only went up sixteen students, or the year prior to that, it was thirty, which was sixteen, seventeen. It only went up sixteen students. And then I see in our budget that we've decreased the budget at that school for six hundred thousand, it's the decrease in the budget. And so, what I wanna start hearing from the administration is, why are, what are we doing at the state level when we're talking about the money that we need for these schools? Because that's just not an acceptable number, and that's just one school. There's multiple schools that are like that, which has raised my concern about what are we doing with our FTEs in every single school? I went through every single school. This is a problem. Like, we're literally talking about, about a handful of students out of, out of a school of hundreds that are proficient and are on, on, on grade level. This is my issue, and I'll just say it now, this is my issue with the fact that I feel like we don't have teachers that are outraged by this. Like, teachers should understand that we're not coming for your jobs if you feel like you're not getting the supports that you need, because you only got a handful of students in your class that are on grade level. Like, this is the type of help that I feel that we need at the state level, and I, and I really want the administration to understand where I'm coming from, because I have a page of twenty questions. This is why I need to understand, what is the rationale? 'Cause y'all are down there in the schools almost every day, like, like, these numbers are, shouldn't be acceptable to us. And so, if we're going to the state telling them why we need more money, they're looking at us like, well, you got a billion-dollar budget, but look, we only got a certain amount of kids that are proficient. This is why, and this is the help that we need. And so, I just wanted to bring that up as an example, because we talk about percentages a lot, but I look at it as whole numbers, and then we start to see all these kids that drop out, and then where do they go? And so, that's what I really want in a response to my questions, is because it's gonna help in regards to advocacy. We got many advocacy groups that wanna help. I'm actually tired of defending the fact that we are, we are looking for more money every single year. It's been the same, the same arguments. I really want the state to understand why it is that we need this money. And so, I'm just hoping in regards to whole numbers, in regards to the staff that we need, that we start to look at our responses, that this is why we need certain stuff.
Commissioner Davis, are we still on section four, or are you ready to move on?
Well, I wanted to tag on to what has been shared here. That's why last time we were together, that I really was uplifting Dr. Aquino's report on not having the strategic plans that we have. He talked about in the report that the improvement plans for, for schools not necessarily being followed or, or proper for the school. And so, I think it goes back to, you know, what everyone is saying. We're trying to understand why there isn't a bang for the buck, as you would say, when you're looking at the ELA scores and the, and the math scores. And I think it would be so helpful, as I was saying last week, to, to work backwards, like, what does each school need in supports in the classroom? What kind of professional development does a teacher need? What kind of professional development do the principals need? So, as they observe the educators, they'll see that they're, that they're differentiating in their classrooms. They'll, they'll see that they're using all the tools that need to be utilized in the classroom. And so, that's what I was really talking about last week, when I was trying to uplift how important it is that you have to have a place where you're going. You have to have a, a compass. You have to have know which way is north. And again, that's why I think that I'd like to understand better, are we starting in the classroom? Are we starting with what the, the curriculum? Is it standardized across, across grades, et cetera? All the things that we know are, are best practices, do we have that? And if we're trying to get there, does this budget fund us to get there? That's really what I was trying to get at last week. And it's, again, my colleagues are, are getting at it as well, trying to understand the inner workings, and how do you put together a budget without understanding those, those inner workings or having improvement plans that persons understand and persons are utilizing all the things that Dr. Aquino talked about in his report. So, I just wanted to comment on, on, on that. I don't know if anyone wanted to say anything, I just wanted to make, to add my comments.
Any other questions in section four? And keep in mind, you still, you have the early childhood education.
I have...
At the end of this section, we have, the chief's budgets are in this section.
I have questions from the hearing, from persons who spoke, that I'd like to understand what...
Can we get through section four and section six and then cover that at the end?
Okay.
Any other questions on section four? And do remind me, okay?
Okay.
Any other questions on section four? Okay. If there are no more questions on section four, we're ready to move on to section six. Which is the, I'm sorry, is it Alaba?
No, no, just a question. So, five, we're gonna consider when?
At our third delivery, because we only basically just got it, right? Okay? Okay. So, administrative profiles and budget? Would you like to start us off there as well, Dr., Commissioner Davis?
I did have one question. I'm not sure which section it falls into. There is a comment made that we have sixty-four bilingual staff that are long-term substitutes, 'cause they lack certification. Do we have any programs that we help, that we help to pay for to help staff become certified?
Yes. Any questions?
Currently, we have roughly, right, about sixty-four bilingual per diem substitutes from Puerto Rico and other locations that are involved. We're working with a cohort with Brockport, SUNY Brockport, as well as New York State Ed. We're trying to find creative pathways in order for them to get certified. So, that's a, a major program that's underway right now as we speak, and we're looking to get them certified so they can be teaching in the next school year.
And so, we have budgeted for that in nineteen twenty. I don't know what kinds of funds are needed to assist with that.
These are grant funds, okay? These are the universities coming to the table on our behalf. This is New York State Ed, understanding and recognizing that there is a need to do something different. This is New York State Ed, understanding and recognizing that there is a need to do something different. And we've been advocating for this for a while, and it's finally starting to come together.
Okay, so we anticipate having, we don't have them in the budget now, but we anticipate having the monies?
They, they are currently, right now, they're in the, they're in the budget, working like as a per diem substitute. So that number that we talked about earlier, these are folks that are working for us on a daily basis as a per diem substitute. And again, they're in the bilingual, as far as potential to fill bilingual positions for us.
Okay, so like, the courses that they might need, or the certifications?
That's being covered by New York State, New York State Ed, and, and SUNY Brockport are working with us on that.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
Yeah.
And are Title II funds being used for that? Is that?
Title II funds are primarily being used for professional development. And, and, but they're not being used for this particular program.
Commissioner Shepard? Commissioner White? I do have an alibi from the previous section. Your parent liaisons and your homeschool assistants, in the aggregate, decreased across the district, the home, the homeschool specialists in particular. And does that leave, uh, does that leave a parent liaison or someone of similar function in every school?
Yes, it, it does. The only reductions were on the people with similar titles, but were attendance people. And that was reduced about in half, I think.
Given that we really haven't seen an improvement in attendance district-wide over the past several years, what's the justification for that?
Again, I, I believe.
Purely dollars and cents?
And they can, some of it's dollars and cents, and some of it is just adding more people isn't the solution. Other people can do that work. And again, it's nothing against the people who were doing that work. But we had to make some reductions in some places.
Permission to be candid? One of the things I've seen over my twenty years, and I can't say that it's happening in this instance or any other instance, but I have found that there's a propensity to handle things through layoffs that should be handled through disciplinary action. In other words, if, if, if the people responsible for attendance work, in this, let's use this example, aren't being as effective as we want them to be, they're not necessarily getting counseled toward better, producing better results, or just saying, oh, let's, let's cut the budget. And then we just take the lowest-ranking people out of the equation.
I understand. That's not what happened. We're not saying anything about the people or the job that they were doing. As you know, when you cut a budget, the least senior are the people that are cut. And most of the time, they aren't necessarily people that are high or low performers. So that didn't have, wasn't a factor.
Okay. Well, that, that was exactly my question, was, I was going to lift up, basically, what was lifted up during the hearing, that the attendance assistants made nine hundred and eighty visits and made eleven thousand, you know, phone calls. And this is a district where we're having a difficult time with absenteeism. And they're making relationships with families that wouldn't be made. And the proposal is to drop half of them. We have twenty, and to drop ten of them, which means, you know, only five thousand phone calls, only four hundred and forty homes visited. And it seems like a valuable resource to, to not, I was just wondering, how much would it be to keep ten, to, to keep the ten? How much money are we talking about?
Why Everton's figuring that out. Again, other people can do the similar, or some of the same kinds of things. We have a parent liaison in, in every building. And again, looking at the structure of their jobs and making sure they're doing parent-type jobs rather than any other jobs is really crucial. But I don't know how much we're ten. So we're talking about five hundred thousand dollars to add ten back.
And could I ask the same for the other ones, the, the registrars and the home hospital teachers that also spoke?
Again, their different answers are both. The registrars, we've already added back three. They had two retirements. And again, and the home hospital was based on usage. No one will go without being serviced at, at this point. So they're different categories. And again, we can add lots of things back, and I'll need suggestions from you, what we should take out of the budget. Because, again, we have got to have, not only this year, but next year, a budget that, that stays within our revenues. And we're already eight million dollars above those as it is now.
I think my main concern is, is the particular positions, if they increase the chaos. Because I'm going back to the forty, the forty caseworkers that are gone, and now we have the twenty-four people that will work with the reorganization. I'm just saying that before I heard that, when they were removed, that there was chaos in getting things done. And the registrar also is talking about, they're in charge of scheduling and, and all of that, and a new system that's coming in. So I'm just trying to ensure that there won't be chaos in nineteen twenty.
That'll be our charge to make sure. And again, the cases, we've created enough positions that the cases or their expertise will be used still. Many of them will get other jobs. But we have a, a system that is going to the courts, that they're going to tell us how to do it, because we haven't been doing it the best way for kids. And some of the complaints are adults and not about kids. And I think, again, I brought you a draft budget that does balance, but it's about, I didn't say to people, go ahead, destroy our programs, and for that. Every, these people thought long and hard about the way to do it without hurting kids in the school.
Are we still on the same topic?
Yeah.
Okay, please.
Yeah, and I just want to piggyback on what Commissioner Davis said. Because what I, I hear is a sincere effort to try to reconcile our competing demands, which is to provide services to kids, but also be sound fiduciary agents. And, and, and trying to do that, it sounds to me like we have suggested that, in the case of cases, we're going to have people do the work that they were doing. In the case of reading instructors, I heard your team say you're going to have people do what maybe the reading teachers were doing, or reallocate resources. And then finally, in terms of attendance and parent support, I sort of heard the same sort of thing. My big question, I think this is one of Commissioner Davis's point, but it certainly is my point, and you don't have to answer it now, Dan, but how are we going to make sure that those services are really being replaced by other people? I mean, I just identified three categories of, of issues, and I, I think this is Commissioner Shepard's point, too. Areas where we're struggling. And, and so what you've said, to be responsible as fiduciary agents, we got to have, reallocate our resources and have people perform these things. Again, you don't have to write it down now, or even later, but that we got to be certain that, that people are going to cover for these very important areas that we weren't doing too well in any way. You have a difficult job, but I'm saying it's going to be even more difficult, because you got to make sure that people are going to cover for these people that aren't around.
Well, you have to look at each category. The cases are one that it wasn't them individually. The system did not work. It didn't work, and now we're under a consent decree because of it. Their expertise will still be used, but in a different role. The attendance, and again, you know, we'll relook at it again. There are other people in this system. We have sixty-five hundred employees that can pick up some of the work. We still have half of them. The registrars, I've been working with them, and we're going down from nineteen to fourteen. And we're assured that the business of registrars will still be done. But I've, I've got to tell you, not all school districts have nineteen or fourteen registrars. That, a lot of times, is given to counselors and to people in the building to do it. But we're not going there. We're going from nineteen to fourteen.
Okay. So Commissioner Davis got her question. Commissioner Hallmark? On, in Section Six? No questions? Commissioner Shepard?
Yeah, I just, it was on the same point. That was just brought up in regards to our, our home assistants. So I did have a question about parent liaisons. Are they a part of a bargaining unit? Are they a part of a unit? Which one?
Ben, 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 uh, parent liaison?
Yes.
Isn't that Ben?
No, the parent liaison position, rap. Okay, so, Dan, you had asked for suggestions. I don't have a suggestion now, but what I would like to know, this is an additional question, is in regards to us offering ideas for cuts. I want to know about civil service exam positions. And I would like to have an understanding of how effective they are versus the amount of pay. So for instance, in one school, and I have to go through all the schools again, I see that we have an office clerk, which gets paid a certain amount. And then we also have a secretary, which get paid double. I assume they will be doing the same work in the office. I'm not sure. But those are the areas that I would like to see us have an analysis on that. And then with the home assistants, I know you probably don't have the answer now, but losing ten, can you let me know how many of those home assistants are parents? And if they could possibly move over into another position? Because my issue is that we only have one parent liaison in schools that have an excess of three hundred kids, which is, is kind of a, a large caseload, in my, in my opinion. So maybe there might be some way to configure that, where people wouldn't lose their jobs in home assistance, but we might be able to put them in another position, under another title that is needed in a certain school. So I would like to know, of those ten, or, or how many of the home assistants altogether are parents?
Again, under Section Six Administration. No questions from Commissioner White? Commissioner Davis, do you have any more questions on Section Six Administration?
I have one question. I see that some of the positions are being centralized. For, for example, two point eight, or is this Section Four? It might not be Section Six. Was two point eight in the responses? I had noticed that there was no per diem substitute budgeted for, across pre-K to eight. And it was stated is because the substitute budget has now been centralized. So it's not, so principals at the building level are not controlling the budgets for subs anymore. Now it's at a centralized level? Is that how it's working?
It, it's not a matter of not controlling the budget now. What happened is that when we budget, we budget the, the dollars centrally. And as the school uses the resources, we put the dollars in the school. Because in prior years, we have gone from centralizing the dollars versus putting the dollars in the schools and the school utilizing the budget. One of the challenges that we ran into when we put the dollars in the school is if us, for one, trying to determine how much to put in a school. Because we don't know how many teachers are going to be absent in, in doing that. And then the other thing is, if you find a methodology to distribute it to all the schools, so reduce it from a central, centralization, then you have one school overutilizing because of whatever reason. You have teachers going out on medical leave, you know, for long-term leave. Then you start moving monies from school to school to balance that out. So we have run into challenges with that. We've tried it in the past, like, for two years, and it was very challenging. So what we have done is keep it centralized. And as a school utilizes the resources, when it comes to payroll, and before we post that, we put the dollars in the school to make sure that those get paid.
Okay. What are the other things that are paid centrally? I forgot the other ones, the other types of?
You have that. You have agency clerical, which, again, is substitute, but it's what we use to test our agency, that provides services, like for powers, clerical staff, and I think library, what? Library books, so any clerical staff.
I was trying to read that, the textbooks. That's, that's why it was zero for the school.
That's also zero, because, because when, once they order, they order it centrally, and then it gets deployed to the school. So when it reaches the school, it goes into the school. Because we're, we're looking at our, our textbook and library book inventory system, and we're fine-tuning that. So based upon what we see the school needs, then the school gets those books ordered for them. So when we do the budget, we don't know what inventory will be like at the end of the year to determine what they need, to see how much dollars go to that school.
So in overall, this budget that we get at the end of the year, each of the budgets for each of the schools is going to change, because some things are being done centrally, and as they use it, you put it against the school. So the budgets that we have now will be different.
Exactly. And that's why when we have our meeting about the finances, you'll see where we have sometime budget, budget amendments, because we move dollars around based upon how dollars come in.
Commissioner Hallmark, any questions? No? Commissioner Shepard? Commissioner White?
Oh, I'm good.
All right, I'm not hearing any more questions from Section Six.
I had one more question, but I'm not sure if it's Section Six again or not. It was about, do we provide instruction at Rush at the facility? I asked a question about incarcerated youth and the services that we provide. And for one program, we provide R C S D staff that provides the instruction. I was wondering, do we provide that at Rush as well? Let me try to find the number.
It's question two point one on page twelve.
For Youth Injustice? And thirteen? Are you talking about, Commissioner, are you talking about industry, or are you talking about another program?
Yes, industry, yeah.
Oh, industry, I don't think we're at industry. I've never seen industry. We're at North Haven, which is non-secure. The Monroe Children's Detention Center, which is our secure program that we support. Industry is, is private, or state-run.
So I just, oh, I'm sorry.
I saw something about OAKA. I just saw something about OAKA, and I'm just trying to find it again, where it was.
Sorry. I also want to make note that the Monroe County's Children's Detention Center is housed with industry in Rush. So I, but I don't know if that's what you was looking at, or looking at. But they are actually in Rush with industry.
Okay, so if that's, if that's, all I know is Monroe County's Detention Center, so.
Yeah, yeah, they used to be.
Okay. So we actually provide instructors?
Yes, we do.
For those?
Oh, okay. Is that your last question, Commissioner Davis?
Or now? I think so.
On, okay, for Section Six? Because I'm, I'm ready to transition. The next items on our agenda are our regular monthly financial updates and reports. You didn't receive them until this morning by email and Board Docs posting. But they are, as an information item, the financial reports are available to you on Board Docs and in your emails. We also have the quarterly change order report for January through March available. That will be put to a vote at our next business meeting. If you have questions, this is the time to do it. Everton, pursuant to our conversation in the hall yes, the other day, will there be budget amendments?
No.
No.
Okay, thank you. Um, there are, uh, grant items, there is a settlement, so there's, there, there's, there's funds that are in a pending state, pending a budget amendment, but we're going to put that off...
Yes.
A little bit longer, okay? Just because they're not large in scope, okay? Any questions on the reports that we will be voting on at the next meeting? No questions. Okay, we also have a number of, um, final payment resolutions. Those are also available to you and have been emailed to you.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I don't imagine you've had a time to review them, but please do so before our next, um, board meeting?
Mm-hmm.
And is there any other business?
We have a motion for executive session.
In that case, I'm going to turn the gavel back over to our Dean President White.
Thank you, Commissioner Powell. I need a motion to go into executive session to discuss a particular employee...
So moved?
Employees, it's been moved by Commissioner Hallmark. Is there a second? Commissioner Powell?
Second, I'll second.
All who's in favor say aye. Aye. Again, I want to thank the administration for, uh, spending this lovely evening with us and, uh, providing us this information. And if anybody wants to see us adjourn, we're going to adjourn from the second floor. Good night.